Call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. I'd like a motion, the approval of the minutes from the meeting, held November fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. A person's wishing to address the school board. Scott Ershman. Hey Scott, if you could just say your name and address.
Yeah, no problem. Scott Ershman, Sioux Falls, 806 South Tenth Avenue. Recently, I saw that you guys were doing a survey to determine the school start date, which is fine, because I know that you have to evaluate this every few years, and that's a wonderful thing. But I was a little disappointed at the fact that people who pay taxes and fund the education in this community are not being involved with that survey. And instead of coming up here and just complaining about that, I figured there's a solution to that problem. Do it the same way we did when we changed the date to begin with. Make it up to the voters. I believe we have a school board election every, I think, one to two years. And put it on the ballot. You put three dates on there, two in August, one after Labor Day. You put on there, pick a date that you'd like school to start. You put, in parentheses, the date that it currently starts, and leave it up to voters. I think, a lot of times, voters feel like they're being, taxpayers are being left out on decisions. We had this thing called Revolutionary War, because we were not being represented. We were paying taxes to the English, and we were not being represented. And taxation without representation is not fine. A lot of people say, since I don't have children, that I shouldn't have a say in the matter. And I guess, why should I have to pay for taxes? I think that it does affect a lot of people who don't have kids, to tell you the truth. There's a lot of grandparents out there who take care, take care of their kid, their grandchildren in the summer. Could affect them in many different ways. So it does affect the economics of people who don't have children also. So, I hope you would consider that. The other thing about it is, I think it would be beneficial, instead of having all these committees and groups and discussions and meetings and go on and on and on, you could just simplify it and have the voters pick the date. And if they think the Labor Day after Labor Day thing's been working, well, then leave it that way. If they don't like it, then they can change it. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Just for your knowledge, we're going to have two open meetings for the public, just so that people like yourself can have some input. So thank you for your input. Okay. Deanne, good news report.
Hold on.
Can you wait just a moment?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Good news report, Deanne.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. As you know, the Sioux Falls Public School students accomplish many amazing feats every single day, but a Lincoln High School student can boast about one achievement of which few others can even begin to dream. The maximum score on the ACT is thirty-six. The ACT is taken by 1.8 million students in all fifty states and 130 countries worldwide each year, yet only about 1,000 of those participants achieve the highest score possible. That is point zero six percent of the total test takers. Eric Feng is one of those 1,000. Eric is here with us tonight. He's going to talk a little bit about his current class load at Lincoln High School, how he prepared for the test, maybe offer some pointers to anyone out there who might be watching tonight, and what his future plans include as well. So please help me welcome Eric.
Hey, Eric. Welcome. Thanks. I feel welcomed. Just my first point about current class schedule. I participate in band, and then after band in the morning, I do AP Spanish. And then, AP Spanish, I take online Chinese, just for more language. After that, I go to Augustana for Calc II, and next semester, I'll do Calc III. And finally, I have taken the CT course, Medical Interventions, to determine whether or not I feel that the medical field is ready for me, since I'm a senior and I need to decide AP, ACT prep, I don't know. I know Mr. Thoki has children, so just focus on the stuff that you feel that you need, that you struggle with. Personally, it was for me, the reading section, as well as writing, which I still didn't do very well in. The essay, the essay, not the multiple choice. And then, oh, last thing is my plans for the future. I am actually in the process of deciding what type of career I want to go in, hence I took CT Medical Interventions. Actually, before senior year started, I was pretty set on taking Computer Science, but because Medical Interventions is so interesting, I am now debating between medicine and Computer Science.
Awesome.
Where am I applying? I am applying to several schools, including the local USD and DSEU, as well as several out-of-state schools, such as Naval Academy in Annapolis, Stanford, UCLA, Berkeley, Northwestern, and Brown.
Awesome.
Some safety schools for you, huh?
Oh, no. So, I'm applying to the USD Medical Program, so that after four years, I'm guaranteed acceptance student to USD Medical School, and I hear that's really competitive, so.
Great.
Fingers crossed.
Well, I know your parents are proud, and we are awfully proud of you as well, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Wonderful accomplishment.
Thanks.
Do we have any conflicts of interest that need to be brought forward? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The supplement consent agenda, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes with an abstention from Board Member Ryder. Now on to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay. Our first report tonight is a report on the Native American Connections Program Report. That report will be brought to us by our Director of Curriculum Services, Ann Smith.
Good evening. The consent agenda went faster than I expected. Title VII Indian Education was first established as part of the Civil Rights Act in 1964. In the Sioux Falls School District, the Office of Indian Education provides instructional support services by providing needed supplies, transportation, cultural programming, enrollment help, and referral services to Native students in the Sioux Falls School District. In 2002, the Sioux Falls School District's Office of Indian Education began offering our Native American Connections classes as an elective to engage students and teach them about Native American history and culture. Classes were first implemented at the high school and middle school levels. Program started at Lincoln High in 2002, and then expanded to Washington, Roosevelt, Axteal Park, and Hootier in 2003. In 2009, a public, a pilot was undertaken to teach Lakota language at each high school. Early in the inception of the Native American Connections classes, case management was included. Through case management, teachers get to know students and learn about their style of learning. In addition, they build relationships with members of the student's home and family. In 2007, South Dakota passed the Indian Education Act. This impacted the Native American Connections Program by providing guidelines mandating the development of course content for curriculum and coursework in South Dakota American history, American Indian history and culture. As a result of this mandate, NAC teachers at the middle and high school levels work to identify core concepts that are essential to understanding and teaching the history and culture of the Ochere Shakawin, the proper name for the people commonly known as the Sioux. Through this process, the NAC teachers have written lessons for NAC coursework and lessons that infuse the standards into existing curriculum. In 2011, a workforce worked to begin planning NAC services for the elementary level. The creation of an elementary NAC program that would meet the unique needs of elementary students and the structure of elementary schools led to the hiring of twenty-four Native American Connections facilitators. The goal of the facilitators is to focus their work on infusing the Ochere Shakawin standards, which were adopted by the Board of Edu, South Dakota Board of Education in 2011. Today, there's an NAC teacher or facilitator in every school in our district. Each high school offers NAC classes, as well as a Lakota language class taught by a teacher fluent in the language. At the middle school level, NAC classes are offered as an elective at George McGovern, Hootier, and Edison. Case management is provided at Memorial and Patrick Henry due to lower numbers of Native American students at those schools. At the elementary level, rather than a standalone class, the NAC facilitators work to, work with the classroom teachers to be sure that lessons are infused appropriately. The goal of the facilitators is to write lessons infusing the Ochere Shakawin standards into the elementary curriculum and to be a resource for elementary staff. I would like to acknowledge that our Coordinator of Indian Education, Teresa Lukey, is here this evening, and we also have three of our Native American Connections teachers here. The report continues with the enrollment for the last three years of our Native American students. The total Native American students, the reason there's a total Native American students and then Native American students enrolled with the Office of Indian Education, the total Native American students are those students who identify themselves as Native American when they check their ethnicity box. The total Native American students enrolled with the Office of Indian Education represent those students who are registered with a tribe or whose parent or grandparent is registered with a tribe that's federally recognized. And then Table Three indicates the number of students who are current, who have been enrolled in the Native American Connections classes for the last three years. With that, I would ask the Board to acknowledge the Native American Connections Update Report.
Any questions, Rand? Hearing none.
Sorry. I was just seeing quite a decline in the middle school, and I don't know if that's, we've got sort of the name, same number of students, so I was just wondering if there's, maybe we're not marketing the class, or just the interest isn't there?
That would be something that we would need to explore.
Just a question, kind of, in general. I don't expect an answer. And I, maybe I'm not going to be comparing exactly apples to apples, but in our immersion program, one of the, one of the, I think, reasons for the success of that is that all of the instructors in that program are Spanish-speaking. We've had the discussion about the visa programs that we access for, for those teachers. In, in the Native American Studies, do we have a breakdown of how many Native Americans or folks that are registered with the tribe are part of our teaching staff in that program? I, I don't know. Like I say, not something I expect an answer to, but as we work with the strategic plan and start looking at some of those hiring practices and where we go with that, I'd, I'd hope that that's something that we would keep in mind.
Any questions, further questions, Rand? Hearing none. May I have a motion to acknowledge the Native American Connections Update Report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank the instructors that are here and the ones that aren't here. Obviously, I think it's, you know, we live in South Dakota, where we do have a very diverse population, and your role is very important to those students and to our community as well, to make sure that they feel like they belong in our schools and have a way to participate, maybe in a unique way, that allows them to celebrate their heritage and their background. And so, thank you for your work and time that you spend working with those students. It means a lot to us, but I know it means a lot to them and their families as well. So, we appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Is acknowledged.
Our next report comes to us from our Director of Human Resources, Becky Dorman. This will be the public hearing for application waivers from administrative rules. Mrs. Dorman?
Good evening. Yes, I am here to request the Board to open a public hearing as a step required for school districts to apply for waivers from administrative rules. Tonight, I bring forward two waivers that we, we wish as administration to move forward on, and that would be an administrative rule to instructional staff. The first one is actually a renewal from a waiver that was approved in 2011, which gives our Spanish immersion teachers a little bit more flexibility when they come to South Dakota with an international transcript. They, the state certification office gives them some time to get their elementary certification, because sometimes they come here and they don't have that piece, because that isn't offered in their, in their country. And then the second would be a waiver to the Plan of Intent Administrative Rule, and we would be requesting additional time for three special education teachers to finish their special education endorsement. They would need an additional year. And then one gifted education teacher needs a little extra time to finish the endorsement as well. So, at this point, I'm, I am requesting the Board to open a public hearing to see if there's anyone that has input or comment to provide.
Okay. Is there any questions and comment?
The waiver for Spanish immersion is for, it says for elementary. Is there any special things that have to happen on the secondary level, as we look at middle school and high school? Or is there no requirements for certification, or do they normally come with that?
That certification aligns much more closely with people, or applicants that come here. So if they had a literature background, that transfers through in a United States transcript.
Sure.
So, it seems to work a little better.
Good. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize the administration to proceed with the applications for waivers from the administrative rules?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify.
I think we actually have to go through the hearing, right? We have to see if there are people with comments?
We need to open it up for public comment at this time.
Right, right. Yes.
Okay. No problem. We'll open it up for public comment. Concerns? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize the administration to proceed with the application for waivers from the administrative rule? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Final report of the evening will be the School Improvement Plan Report. This was done as part of our Curriculum Services, but was done with, by Demi Moon. Dr. Moon, would you please lead us through this presentation?
Good evening. Earlier this year, I presented a report on our accountability and how our school performance index turned out as a district and then as the individual schools. So, part of that process, then, after those SPI numbers for the schools and for the district are released, is then schools get together and they work on their school improvement plan for the following year based on the data that has come out and the data that they have collected and used over the year. School improvement plans are a requirement for all of the title schools. Under our ESSA, the schools that receive title funding are required to not only create, but turn in those, and, and have available those school improvement plans, so that there is some accountability for the funding that comes with, with the title classification. Each building has its own school improvement team, and within that, there's a building leadership team. Those teams are the ones who get together, look at data, create strategies, and essentially build the school improvement plan. All schools in the Sioux Falls School District participate in the process of analyzing data, looking at data, setting goals, and creating strategies. So they are all involved in the school improvement process, and ultimately all create their own school improvement plan. Previously to this year, each school has had a Google Sheet, which has allowed them to document their school improvement plan. That sheet, over the years, has gotten a little long and a little wide, and so it required a lot of information being compiled into one, at a glance, sheet. Schools, this last spring, got together and filled that template out again, and had a data retreat where they went through the entire process and created those strategies, recorded all of the data that they had at that point, and looked at data through four different lenses, which is recommended by the state, and those are student achievement programs and structures, professional practices, and family and community data. After, by the end of their data retreat, they set new goals for this coming up year and designed their professional development around those goals and strategies. Over the summer, the Department of Education provided training in a new template used to organize these school improvement plans. The process and the template are called the Systemic Collaborative Data Processing System, and then there's a template that goes with it. That required, in the fall, for us to reconvene all of our school leadership teams or building leadership teams, and get back together and review this new template and this new process. So this fall, we did just that, and we did that after the SPI numbers were released, and so schools were able to use that information at the time when they were reexamining the school improvement plans that they had created in the spring. When they left after that training, they were left with the task of reevaluating their goals and strategies and deciding if they still aligned with what the data was telling them, and they needed to migrate all of the information from their old plans into their new plans, or their new, their old template into the new template. They weren't really necessarily creating a new plan, but actually just reorganizing the information into the new plan, or the new template. In addition to the goals and strategies, the state requires that the schools set annual measurable objectives that are designed to help schools reduce the percentage of, the percentage of students that are not proficient in math. The goal is to have schools reduce that percentage in half within the next six years. So they set benchmark goals for that process. Additionally, all schools that are in the bottom ten percent of that SPI ranking, and we identified that in the earlier report, are identified as focus and priority schools if they receive title funding. And we do have three focus schools and two priority schools. Those schools are required to work with a state support team member and required to do some additional paperwork. This new systemic data processing template, though, allows those schools to not do additional work, so they're not doing duplicative work on top of the school improvement planning that the rest of the schools are doing. They're able to submit their new plans under this new template directly to the state, and that alleviates some paperwork for them. Tonight, just to, oh, so, I apologize. Attached at the end of the report is the link that allows you, as board members and anybody that has the link, so, and it is posted on the school website, to analyze and to look at the school improvement plans for any of the elementary, middle school, and high schools. Those are a living document, so they will continue to be updated as the school teams meet over the course of the year and continue to look at data. They will record their findings, they will record their meeting information, and as they continue to develop new strategies, they will continue to record those in the template as well. And I'm going to show you what one of those templates looks like tonight. The one that I chose is for Hayward Elementary, and that is one of our focus schools, so that's one of the, one of the ones that I chose to use as an example tonight. I'll just quickly go through the tabs, so that you kind of understand what each of the tabs says. The first tab that is here is simply a tab that shows the names and identification, email address, contact information, for those that serve on that support team for the school. The next tab, while you can't see a good view of it on the screen, does allow you to see where our goals are for student achievement and for attendance for Hayward Elementary, and then below that is what their actual percentages are. And so they will continue to update this sheet as the years go on. This is where they try to identify how to reduce that percentage that are not proficient in half over the next six years. As different teams meet throughout the year, whether they're administrative teams, leadership teams, grade alike team, content alike teams, grade alike teams, they record their meetings and the agenda and different discussion points or things that they need to do next through the Meetings and Summary tab. The Data Processes tab allows them to record all of the different types of data. We talked, I talked earlier about the four lenses of data, and that would be the student achievement programs and structures, professional practices, and family and community. And this allows them to keep track of that data, classify it, so they make sure that they are covering data from all four of the categories. On this next tab, hopefully, when you look at it on your computer, you can see a little bit more lines and rows, but you'll notice that all of the district's priority statements from our strategic plan are across the top, and then the individual schools, when they create their strategies, they place those strategies and align them with the district's After they identify their strategies that they want to work on for the year, the next thing for the school building leadership teams to do is to develop their professional development that will grow those strategies and grow the interventions that they have in place, and so this is a place for them to record all of their professional development, organize how they're going to fund it, if it requires some funding, and if it requires, or if they're seeking funding from a, from a source that they don't have access to those funds, this allows them to have a place to organize that as well. So this is for their professional development plan. And the last tab is the Professional Development Survey. That's an optional piece that the Department of Ed put into the template that allows the different people on the leadership team to evaluate their professional development plan after it's done, and kind of have a, an anonymous way to collect some data on whether, on how the leadership team feels about the professional development that they have in place for the coming up year. So some of the schools have participated in that, and some have chosen not to. As you look through the different schools, you will notice that some are a lot more in-depth than others. Just please remember that it is a living document, so hopefully all of the schools will continue to update that as they meet, and some of them have different meeting times later in the year scheduled already, and so I would imagine that more information will get placed into those at a later time, but the access to all of them is there. get placed into those at a later time, but the access to all of them is there for you. And in summary, then, I would just comment that the Sioux Falls School District remains committed to continuous improvement, and each school maintains a school improvement plan using an online template. The school improvement plans are focused on the district's mission, the priority statements from the strategic plan, and the AMOs, or annual measurable objectives, set forth under the Department of Education's accountability model. Are there any questions?
No questions for Demi.
Is there a minimum number of staff members that participate? I see something, just a variety, so I didn't know if there's a goal to have so many just so that you have people represented, or is it, and is it voluntary? How do people get involved in participating at their school?
The leadership teams are generally selected by the building principal, and how each of them chooses them or asks for volunteers is kind of up to their own individual leadership style. From the different teams that I have worked with, just a little bit since I've been here, I have met people that are new to the process, and I have met people that have been a part of that vision and that leadership in their building for quite a few years. So, I think there's a good variety of experience and new ideas coming in to join that effort as well. There is no requirement there, though.
I can certainly appreciate the time and energy that's put into creating these, 'cause when you look at them online, I mean, the depth of information is good to see. I think it's nice for parents, even, to be able to go out and look at what their school is working on and what the goals are, because they vary as much as the students do at each of our schools, so, good work.
Good information. Any further questions for Demi?
Okay. If not, I would just ask you to approve the individual school improvement plans for the sixteen-seventeen school year.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Demi.
Thank you.
I move that we go into executive session per South Dakota Quotified Law 1-25-22.